Testing. Okay, aloha everybody. Thank you for being here. This is a brief introduction, there's a lot that I'm gonna cover. There's some feedback forms at the table, there's a lot more information there that I'm not gonna be able to cover here. I'm trying to pack as much information as I can into an hour and a half for you guys. And then at the end, I'd be happy to answer questions and get your ideas and comments. Help yourself to snacks, water, the bathrooms are back there to the right. And if you do have questions, please write them on the feedback form and give them to Blake, the man in the blue back there, the blue collar shirt. Okay, well we're gonna go ahead and get started, we're just gonna start with Hawaiian County compost facility. So, the Hawaiian county passed a contract for composting. So we're switching from doing mulch to compost now. And this is to help with fire ants, for killing fire ants and rapid Ogea death. As we know, a lot of the mulch that the county was providing for the Kauri was fighting fire ants and rapid Ogea death. Another thing is, one of the first things that the mayor did, he got into, when we all got into office, is he canceled that contract. And so, behind closed doors, we all had to fight for this contract to go forward. Because we want compost to be something that is provided to our constituents, to their form of sustainability. And so, that was a really tough fight, but we all came together as a council. It's really sad that we had to do it in an executive session, this is something that corporation council was insisting, even though we wanted the public to see what was going on. So after months of fighting, we were able to get the contract adjusted. It will no longer be in Hawaiian homelands, which is a win. And now we're looking at two new locations, Keo transfer station and the shipment industrial area. So if you have a preference, please let me know, we can make sure your comments are heard. And I'm gonna introduce George here, from Department of Environmental Management, to talk about any more further details, the Hilo landfill closure, the composting contract, and our new mulch policy. And we'll do a quick question and answer with him, and then move on.
Thank you. Well, this is my first town hall meeting, and it doesn't be crap, I mean this is good. I'm gonna have these high expectations for rest of the meetings I go to now. I'm gonna start out with mulch. The mulch program has been extremely successful. So we collect green waste at some of the transfer stations and also in Hilo. And we have such a demand for mulch in Hilo, that we're not able to keep up. Which sort of is a bad situation, but it's also good that there's demand, that people want it, it's valuable. And as mentioned, we are, it's called enhanced mulch, so it is being treated, so you don't have invasive species in it. We have the ant lanthorn come in and do testing, and they're not finding little fire ants in the mulch. So again, very good product and high demand. Now, if anybody wants more mulch, on the west side, we have all kinds of mulch. So if you have a truck, you wanna go over, get mulch, there's almost an unlimited amount over there, it's not as high as the demand. Getting to the composting, as mentioned, there's two sites that we're looking at for composting, the industrial park and next to the transfer station, transfer station here. And we've hired a consultant to do an assessment, a site assessment for those sites. So sort of an industrial engineering, you know, housing utilities, how far is it from our existing operations? So we hired somebody to look at that for us. Then we also hired another firm to do our environmental assessment. So that's looking at the environmental part of it, the culture part of it. And how will that impact the existing environment and any neighbors? But the idea is to get as far away from neighbors as possible, even though we feel the system is an excellent system. The acreage that we're looking at is 40 acres, and about three of it being actually productive, so utilized. And that would be located within the 40. Is there anything else that I should touch on? I mean, with that, or... Again, that's a brief overview.
So are you saying the mulch plant's gonna be moved from Hilo to your shipment or composter station?
Correct, the mulch operation would be moved to the composting operation, yes. That, okay, right now, we're looking at the assessment being done in the end of this year. And then for the actual construction of the facility, so bidding, construction, it'll be about 18 months. So we're looking at July, summer of 2020.
Okay, and if Hilo won't go on until then?
Yes.
At the facility, will people be coming in, pick up mulch, if the place really makes them up?
Yes, yes they will.
Anything else you have?
It's a 10 yard limit that's being stolen for us. What's gonna be happening is that that 10 yard limit should be lifted. And it may be lifted sooner. And the reason for the 10 yard limit is so more individuals can come in and get the materials, so it's spread out instead of some, you know, one homeowner or one business capturing all of the material. So we're trying to be fair. Again, it is something that is being reviewed too. But, when the Hilo landfill closes, then we'll be shipping waste to the west side. And then we'll be back hauling the mulch. So at that point, we're gonna have, we'll be able to meet our demands, we're anticipating being able to meet our demands on this side, and then that limit of 10 cubic yards will be lifted. We're looking at the landfill lasting approximately another year.
Any other questions? I also forgot to thank all of you for being here, thank you. And I want to also acknowledge Council Number O'Hara, who represents Bishop Ford of Lollapuna. Thank you for being here, Ms. O'Hara. Okay, so I'm gonna go over so far what our office has spent our contained sea fund grants on. So we get about $70,000 to spend on a nonprofit, to give to a nonprofit for public purpose. These are to sort of make up for programs that the county is not offering, that still serve some sort of public purpose. So regarding the environment, there's a group in Lollapuna, they're funding this study. Where they're, how many of you have heard of Korean natural farming? Great. So, they're working with Korean natural farming methods, and they have supposedly found a solution that's showing results, where the Ogea is showing some sort of resistance. So, they are working with UH to sort of legitimize their study. And the results hopefully will come out within six months. Right now, we're waiting for it to get approved by DLNR in April, because they'll be using the DLNR land. But that's really exciting, and then once we get the results of that study, that's a solution that we can get out to the public, that people can make themselves to protect their Ogea trees. I've also funded the Keo Ohana Forest Reserve, which is the largest lowland native forest in the state of Hawaii. It's down here in Puna, and so we're working on restoring it to all native species right now. And then, as we all know, we have a really bad problem with stray cats that are just breeding. And so, this is a program where they go and they collect stray cats, they neuter them, and then they also take stray cats and do them for free in the public. Infrastructure, I funded three bus shelters and fur acres. I've also funded free wifi at the Pohola Community Center. Streetlights for Kalapana down by Uncle Roberts. And speed bumps, I also have a fund for speed bumps that we transferred to the department. So if you want a speed bump and you're on a county road, we have a packet for you over there at the roads section. And it shows the requirements, we need you and a couple of your neighbors to sign off on it, and we can fund your speed bump, or speed hump. I also funded park equipment at Pohola Park, this is for the weightlifting section. And training for road associations. As we know, a lot of our road associations are struggling right now. They don't have the resources they need to function properly. There's a lack of transparency sometimes, there could be a lack of accountability for not collecting their road fees. So, we funded a grant through Kuikaki Mediation Center to provide them with how to run a meeting. Just basics on how to run a good meeting, and other things that they could help them with and tips. And there's also a free training coming up for all boards and association, all board members in Puna. And there's a flyer for it back there on how to run a good meeting, it's a two day training. It's definitely going to be worth it, so please take advantage of it.
March 8 and 9, right away, March 7.
March 8 and 9, right, I think it's next weekend. And it's free if you're a part of the homeowner association, if not, you have to pay about, I think $175, so take advantage of it.
And you had good response from the neighborhood associations?
Okay, let me finish that, so it's been half-half. So the two, the program that we funded with Kuikaki Mediation Center, I was allowed to choose two associations for them to work with from the start. So I figured I chose, I would choose the associations that have the worst roads and the most miles of them. So I chose Hawaiian Acres and Fern Forest. So currently, they should be working with Hawaiian Acres. And Fern Forest, actually, after a lot of going back and forth, declined. So if you have an association that could use some help that works on roads, please let me know, we are looking again. Sustainability, I funded the double bucks at certain farmers markets. So if you have EBT, you can go on certain days, this actually already passed. But just so you're aware, we will be doing it again, I'm sure. If you have EBT on these certain days, you can go to the farmers market, you can get double the amount of produce. So this helps feed people who need it the most, and support local farmers. And we also funded free permaculture farming classes, there's a schedule back there. I think it's every week, you can go and learn a new aspect of permaculture farming, hosted by Hawaiian Sanctuary. I funded multiple food baskets in Puna, food pantry, Going Home Hawaii. How many of you have heard of Going Home Hawaii? One for two people. So Going Home Hawaii is a nonprofit that works on homelessness and also helping people come out of jail. So as the mayor may not know, if you are homeless, you have a higher chance of being in jail. And if you're in jail, you have a higher chance of being homeless. So, they work with inmates to provide them with a home, job training, and it's a Pukuhonua, it's cultural. They learn how to grow food, and it's also a sober living house. And medical, the Puna Medical Center supplies, there's a Tropicare, free and public medical screenings. This event, I believe, is coming up either next month or the month after that. They're gonna be providing dental care, eye care, and other medical screenings for free at Keo High School for two days. And this is something that the entire council is funding, luckily it's in our district. So to take advantage of it, go over to ice screening, or teeth cleaning, or whatever you need, for free, it's amazing.
Is there any mention on that on your table?
Yes, yes it is.
It's in June, and you don't have to have need, they're trying to get training for rapid assessment. So, they want, they wanna be swamped.
Okay, I also funded X-ray machine at Puna Medical Center. So now, if you need an X-ray, you don't have to go all the way to Hilo, which is a bonus. And rat lungworm disease. So the department, this is what the semi slug looks like, by the way, it's this little. The Department of Health failed to fund these studies that we need to be able to identify safe water catchment filters, anti-parasitic drugs, and fruit and vegetable washes. So the county council came together and we pooled our contained sea funds to fund the initial study, which is a bio essay, to tell when the larva are dead or alive. And that will be completed in April. And then from there, we're hoping this legislative session will get the funding for the next study that will provide us with the safe vegetable washing, catchment filters, and anti-parasitic treatments. There's a Puna rat lungworm disease support group now, happening regularly in Puna. And I attended one, and listened to stories of, it was about 40 people from all different demographics, sharing how the disease has affected them. And they described something similar of feeling a pain that is between electrocution and being on fire, that moves to a different part of the body every few days. And this can last for months, sometimes years. And a lot of them tell stories of losing their careers and going into debt. So please be safe, watch, need to check, check for the slime, or just don't eat raw vegetables. But generally, you can tell if there's slime on there. And it's actually pretty rare, though we have a higher case of it in Puna.
I heard that freezing the vegetables helps.
Excuse me? Freezing the vegetables?
Yep, I read that in the newspaper, Puna newspaper, I had a report on.
Okay.
And it said, you wash vegetables and afterwards you freeze them, that builds a sludge.
Okay. And who reported that?
There was an article in the Puna newspaper, West Hawaii Today.
Okay, West Hawaii Today?
Yes. And it, well, it was an official article.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is the Nava Ola, it's a charter school, we funded their after-school program up in Mountain View. I've also funded community emergency preparedness trainings that are free and open to the public. Those happened already, but there will be more. And if you would like information on that, please let me know, and I'd be happy to send it to you when they come up again. The YMCA Family Visitation Program, this is for child custody cases that require supervised visits. So this is so that parents can actually visit with their child under the requirements from the court system. I also funded the Veterans Day Parade, the Gay Pride Parade, Aha'ahula'ala'ola. This is an annual event where all the halos, all over the world, come together. And they pool their knowledge and also get rooted back into the authentic tradition of Pula and other traditional practices. And the woman who put this together is the auntie who actually filed the Kuai petitions in Washington DC. So it's definitely a legit event. And the Hokulea Malamahonua visit, this is to fund transportation for the students to go and greet them when they arrive in Puna. And our bus system. So how many of you are aware that the county is designing the next 20 years of our bus system right now? Okay, awesome, well then I have new news for everybody. Last, last council funded a consulting contract. And there's this consultant from SS, they're called SSFM, and they got a lot of money from the county. And they're designing the next 20 years of our bus system. Now, they came out with their first plan a few months ago. And the only service that they had for Puna was this thing called flex service or zone service. And it was three quarter miles from the highway, that's all the service we got. Now, for the people who live in Puna, you know that that doesn't really help us. Because most of our feeder roads to our subdivisions are more than three quarter miles. So I figured they needed some help. And I designed a 30-page proposal with routes through all the main corridors of all of our subdivisions. And that is back there for your review, and I'm going to show you a few of the routes that we designed.
This is the current bill.
This is for the plan. Yes, that we hope to implement for the next few years. So starting from the top, Fern Forest, goes Captain's Drive up to the top of Fern Forest, and back out to the highway. Eden Rock, a loop through the whole subdivision. We already have the route in Fern Acres, which we're going to keep, so I'm gonna put that in there. Hawaiian Acres goes down one road, down seed, and then out east. We designed another one where it goes down one road, down east, and then through Analoa and out to Pohola. We're looking at doing a hub in Keo, a bus hub in Keo. So we also designed a few circulation routes for that, I'll show you. This is one of the Hawaiian Acres pair circulation route. So goes through Hawaiian Acres, out Analoa, into Keo. And through Orchid Land, from Ola'a to Orchid Land Drive. And another one through Orchid Land and Seville Estates. We also did one through Black Sand. These routes would require 9.35 in the paint roads, and 17.25 miles of improvement through the same paint roads. Now, I designed these routes with the Puna Community Development Plan in mind, the circulation plan, and the long-range transportation plan. And there's plenty more to it, there's a lot of copies back there, if you'd like to review, we love your input. And we have a flyer for the second and final round of public input sessions for our bus system. So if you can attend, please come and share your ideas, make sure that they're in the plan. And if you do have any feedback, you can put them on my form. Or you can send it to the SSFM website that's on that flyer. And just make sure that you CC me, so that I can make sure your input is included in the plan.
Was SSFM receptive?
Thank you, good question. They were receptive, they put my entire proposal into the, into the current, we proposed master plan, which is a big win. So we did a little bit more than three quarter mile survey of the highway, we'll have to walk in 10 miles to get to bus. Thanks for asking, thank you. Okay, now that moves us to connectivity, because we also had some routes that connected the subdivision. So this is our connectivity plan, there's a bigger map there that show the routes. So there's five prioritized connectivity points that the mayor's office is prioritizing. We're connecting Fern Forest to Eden Rock through Kalakone and Punahale. Eden Rock and Kupua farm lots through Punahale. South Kupua to Fern Acres through the Puhala Street, and we're just gonna extend it up to South Kupua. Fern Acres and Hawaiian Acres at the bottom of Orchid Street. And lastly, Hawaiian Acres and Orchid Land through Ola'a and, how am I trying to pronounce these without the problems? Okay, and capital improvement projects, since we're on the topic of infrastructure. So capital improvement projects, these are, these are sort of the most power that we have to create change in the council. One of the biggest lessons that I've learned in the past year is how little power I actually have. In order for an infrastructure project to go through, the correlating department, which in our case would be Public Works, because we need roads the most, and finance and the mayor's office, all three of them have to sign off on a project in order for it to get completed. So this is what I proposed in 2007, I put this into the capital improvement project budget. And what was passed, and the mayor's prioritized list, is back there on the table, if you'd like to see. The only project that they put in there was our connectivity plan. But I'm still pushing to get these projects completed. So Ola'a Road, we wanted to be two lanes with shoulders. South Kulani Road with shoulders and lighting, because we have a lot of people that walk up and down that road. On the bus, and they're walking in the dark, and they're walking in the mud. Same with South Kupua. And South Kupua I'm really concerned with the most, because that's where most of our veterans live. And Road 8, shoulders. And Mountain View water spigots, we really need water spigots in Mountain View. With the population growth and the amount of service. You know what's interesting is, we did some research, and according to the UN Human Rights to Water Resolution, Puna does not meet their requirements for basic human rights to clean, drinkable, potable water. And that's because of the amount of time it takes us to get clean water and driving on substandard roads, and also having to wait at the water spigot station. So this is a project that I got included. It's just to provide lighting and additional spigots further down the fence line there. And we want that for now, and also ADA compliance, so getting the pavement smoothed out. And eventually, we want to provide better parking and a traffic circulation system. But for now, we need more spigots, and we need lighting. Red Road, so these are capital improvement projects that I'm going to propose this upcoming session. So Red Road, shoulders. South Kulani, shoulders and lighting. Ihope Road, two lanes with shoulders. Kamu Chain and Raiders and all of Lokalani, that's down in Kalapana Gardens. And that's just to provide them with a paved road. Next is North Peck Road, two lanes. North Glenwood Road into two lanes. Captain's Drive, shoulders. South Lakota Bridge, how many of you have been to South Lakota's Bridge? Wow, nobody. It's actually on a waterfall, it's literally on a waterfall, so it just floods and people get locked in there. It's crazy. And then it's the South Kulani Bridge. Also looking at Kalapana, more water spigots, down at the water spigot station. Two lanes and shoulders from Opiekal Road, Kamuevi. And Ona'ala'ala Road in Black Sand, it goes up to Black Sand. And I've been working on Stainback, it would be great if we could get some shoulders on Stainback, it's so dangerous and it's so narrow. But unfortunately, it's DLNR own, and our state public safety department maintains it, so the county doesn't have any jurisdiction over it, we won't be able to work on it. Oh, the county owns only up to the zoo, and that's why it looks so good. Okay, now I'm gonna talk about disparity. How many of you were aware that I introduced the resolution, talking about how Puna does not get a fair share of the pie, and in fact, we are being discriminated against? Awesome, I actually have a few copies of it back there. So, it was brought to my attention, that when I first got to office, that in year 2000, the federal government, so a lot of other, excuse me, my brain's really too picky. Some residents in Puna filed a complaint with the feds alleging discrimination against Puna and Ka'u, saying that we receive an inequitable level of service, and that we were being discriminated against, in terms of basic services. And that Puna was actually providing a per capita subsidy to the already well-off district, to the already well-off and served district of Hilo. So the feds did an investigation, and they determined that the plaintiffs' allegations were founded. Yes. So, since 2000, my question was, what's changed? We still barely have roads, our transportation options are severely inadequate. We still don't have water, we still have the least police per capita, even though we're 25% of the population. We barely have any medical services, thank God for Puna Community Medical Center. A lot of people don't even have access to emergency services like fire, ambulance, and police, because they live in places like Hawaiian Acres where the cars just don't get to. We have no wastewater sewage treatment plants, therefore, we have no economic development, because we're not providing the infrastructure that we need, and that we require for people to set up businesses in Puna. And we also have very poor internet and cellphone service. So, in the most, in the last budget cycle, I did an analysis, because I was wondering if anything had changed. So if you look at the, so there was this argument, people kept bringing up, well, what do you expect? The property values in Puna are so low, you guys barely contribute anything to property taxes, so why, why should you receive anything? So I was like, okay, well, I looked at how much we pay in property taxes. Difference between Hilo and Puna is 2.1%, they give 2.1% more of the pie. Yet, when you look at the capital improvement- Yet, when you look at the capital improvement budget by district, they're getting almost double what we get in the capital improvement budget. And this is very liberal because we calculated this by benefit districts. So they put District 5 benefiting from a lot of projects that are not in our district. The only project, if you look, I have it printed out there for you, under disparity, is the connectivity plan, which is 3% of the budget split between District 4 and 5. That means we're each getting 1.5% of the budget. We're getting 1.5%, yet we're paying 9.4% in property taxes as a part of the pie. So I introduced this resolution. There's a copy of it back there, I can read it to you. It described the conditions of Puna and how we were not receiving an equitable level of service. And it was all facts, only facts in the resolution. And then it was be resolved that the Council of Hawaii here commits to addressing disparity and preventing discrimination against low-income native Hawaiian and other disadvantaged populations of Hawaii County particularly in Ka'ou and Puna. And I did this because I wanted to bring this to the attention of everyone. And it's not that it's anyone's, especially in the council's fault, but it's just that it's time for a new era. We're 25% of the population, we're growing faster than what our infrastructure can provide for. And we're, I mean, it's about to be a really bad situation, things need to change. So I was hoping to send a strong message to the decision-makers, including the department heads, because they're the ones making the decisions as far as what monies get allotted to certain projects. Unfortunately, the council couldn't handle, and they postponed it indefinitely. I was the only councilperson to vote against postponing it. I wanted that if they're going to kill this resolution, if they're not going to commit to this, then vote no. But they couldn't do that and they postponed it indefinitely. So we're still working on it.
Good for you.
And that moves us to taxes. Because we've been allowed to talk about taxes lately. And this council so far has raised the minimum tax, the fuel tax, the property tax, and now they're looking at the general excise tax. So the minimum tax. So the mayor proposed, so I'm going to just talk briefly about what each tax is and what my position on it is. So the minimum tax, the mayor proposed to double this tax. If you own a few small properties in Puna that are not even of worth for the property tax office to send you an evaluation, because the percentage of how much our property worth is not even worth the stamps and the administrative costs, then you would just pay $20, $25, $50, or $100, depending on how much the property is worth. So if you were paying $25, you now pay $50. If you were paying $100, you now pay $200. This tax also applies to disabled veterans and nonprofits. I was adamantly against this. We have more than 50,000 lots affected by the minimum tax. We're looking at the poorest of people paying the biggest increase, double, 100% increase on their taxes. I was the only council member to vote against this. And since they raised it, and we've been getting complaints at the kazoo. There's a lot of people that are selling their properties now, people that live here, that own a lot of small properties around the island, especially in Puna because it's so cheap. And also people on the mainland that had inherited properties. And now they are selling because they can't afford the tax. And so what are we doing? We're encouraging development. In Puna, exactly where we don't want development because we don't have the infrastructure to provide for it. So that was very disappointing. Next was the fuel tax. So this is a tax that we pay at the pump. The mayor proposed to triple this, from 8.8 cents a gallon to 23 cents per gallon. And this goes into a fund that can only be used for roads and our bus system. I oppose this because, one, fuel tax is aggressive. Second, Puna residents would be disproportionately burdened. I was one of two councilmembers to oppose this, it was me and Councilmember Richards from Pohala.
Jen, Jen, on fuel tax revenues, I think the money spent in the district, is there anything about that?
Yeah, so the money generated at the pumps within the districts can only be spent on road projects in those districts. So Puna drives to Hilo a lot, a lot of times we fill up in Hilo, sometimes we fill up in Puna. If we do fill up in Puna, then that means that those tax monies can only be used for our county roads. However, the majority of our roads are private, so it doesn't really benefit us much. General excise tax. This is the most recent tax that's come up. And this is a tax on everything we buy at the stores, including food and medicine. It's an extra 4% you pay at the registry. It's the most regressive, which means it takes a larger proportion of a poor person's income and a smaller percentage of a wealthier person's income. According to my own calculations, for a family of four, just in the cost of food, this would be an $8 to $10 increase per month, which is about a $100 increase per year. So it's my position that this hurts working families, it hurts people on fixed income. And this $100 a year is in addition to all the other taxes that we just increased. And every dollar makes a difference, and I'm just concerned that we're nickel-and-dining our residents. And especially when there are other options, and I'll have to talk about that. And while I'm in favor, a lot of proponents of this tax are saying that we need this tax to complete our master plan for our bus system, so all of those routes that I just showed you. And that helps people. That helps poor people the most because our bus system serves as a safety net for poor people and working families. However, I think that we can help poor people by not hurting them more. And we can do that through balancing our budget in a way that doesn't put the burden on those who can least afford it and puts the burden on those who can. For example, Oahu, they just passed a residential A class a couple of years ago, which puts a tax on second-dollar million, excuse me, second homes that are $1 million values and are unoccupied. And in the first year, they were able to bring in $35 million. This would more than cover the amount that we need, which is $25 million, they're saying, for our general excise tax. Now, I did a, I ran a quick calculation from our real property values, and we have $1,600 million second homes on our island. If we were to increase their tax by $3 to every thousand, then we would bring in $20 million. And so that is in the courts right now for Oahu. What happened was the millionaires appealed, and the court at first granted the appeal and then changed its mind. So it's currently being upheld that the county does have the authority to do that and that they're not discriminating against wealthy people. And so we are awaiting the results of, right now, I believe it's in the intermediate court of appeals. And it's been there for a long time, so any day now, we should be getting a result. And once that results out, I will be introducing that legislation to balance our budget. And this leads us to another option, which is through our property taxes. So this is, I have a handout back there that shows the rates that the mayor proposed and then the rates that the council adopted. So I drafted the following property tax scenario as a response to what the mayor had proposed. And he proposed across-the-board increase, he was going to increase taxes on homeowners and agvans just as much as hotel and resort. So it was across-the-board equal level of taxes. And this concerned me because I don't feel we should be taxing what people need to survive. We shouldn't be taxing people's homes, we should be taxing people's assets. And not just people's assets, but the assets of those who can most afford a little extra tax. Oh, another thing about the general excise tax is, a lot of proponents say that it's good because it puts more of the burden on visitors, because visitors pay 30% to 40% of our general excise tax. My response to that is, residents are still paying that other 60, 70, we're still paying the majority of the increase. And if we wanted to put more of the burden on visitors, we would increase taxes on hotel and resort industries. And another response, oh, another proponent of the general excise tax says that if we tax the millionaires, then they'll leave because they can buy a house in the Philippines. My response to that is, guess what, guess who's leaving now? Our residents are leaving because they can't afford to live here. Most of my friends are gone in mainland America because the cost of living there is so high. So there are other more appropriate ways to raise funds while taxing those who can most afford it. So here is one of them. And just to give you some context, from 2002, 2007, average real family incomes grew by 16%, but 65% of that growth improved to the top 1%. Does that make sense? And if you look at the cost of living from 1980, 46% average, which is the bottom 20%, if you adjust for wage inflation, we're actually still getting the 70s rate for real family incomes. And the ability to take out loans and own houses in the US has sort of given us an inflated sense of wealth. But when you look at the stats, 1 out of 7 mortgages are either devenque or in foreclosure. Here's another graph, just to give you a little context. This is real average income by percentile, you can see how much income has grown for the top 0%. The second line is the top 1%, and that's the bottom 9%, which is probably the rest of us. So according to the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, when it comes to state and local taxes as a percent of income, which is what people can actually afford, this is how it plays out across the US. As you can see, the poorest people are paying the most. In 2011, Warren Buffett wrote an article to New York Times that was titled "Stop Coddling the Rich." And he wrote that how our leaders have asked for shared sacrifice, but they spared him. So that's kind of where my tax plan comes from. So I got this idea from a former planning director, Chris Ewen. He came to my office and presented this idea to me, he's like, "What if we increase rates and then increase exemptions? Then we'll actually reduce taxes for the lower property valuations and then slowly increase taxes on the higher property valuation." So that, so we ran about 50 different scenarios on Excel sheets, and this is what played out to be the best in our tradition. So this is a commercial. If we increase that to 11.7, we provide a $40,000 exemption, we'll bring in $1.6. So we have about 2,100 properties in the commercial class. If we were to provide that $40,000 exemption, the majority of people within the class would receive a $0 to $50 increase. Those under $180,000 would see a decrease, and it gradually goes up from there. Here's how it plays out on a graph. The blue would be their current taxes, and the red would be the new taxes with the exemption. So it kind of shifts it. So under this plan, a business like Suuson valued at $231,000, that's what their property value is, they would see a $73 decrease in their taxes. And then a business like basically Books, which is on Tamae Avenue, their assessment is a little higher, they would see a $75 increase. And the same with industrial. As you can see, the majority of the parcels would either see a decrease or a $0 to $50 increase. And then those that are super high values, like if you have a $39 million property, you would see the highest increase. Just how it plays out. If you'd like a copy of this, I'd be happy to provide it to you.
What's the current tax rate for the industrial properties? You said 11.7%?
Yeah, I think it's actually near there, but we didn't provide exemptions. The rates are on paper back there, very expensive taxes. Residential, so if we were to slightly increase residential, we'd bring in $9.7 million more. And this would have made the minimum tax and the fuel tax increases completely unnecessary and put the burden on those who can afford it the most. So the majority would see a decrease in their taxes. At about $243,000, they would see a $0 to $50 increase, and then it slowly goes up here. So this is a house of values, these are all for second homes. Residential is second homes. If you're a homeowner, you're in the homeowner class, which is at 6.15. So this is a second home, $166,000, they would have to pay $75 less. And this is another one, at about $258,000, we see a $75 increase in the property tax. So these are people's assets. Residential is their second homes. And same with apartment, apartment is actually a lot of condos. We have 9,600 properties in the apartment class. So with this plan, an apartment at Waikia Villas would see, a Waikia Villas apartment is about $120,000. They would see a $52 decrease in their taxes, and a condo at Puakoe Beach would see a $300 increase. This is how it plays out. So that is my tax plan. I'm going to take a quick break and let Hi-Cop come up here and tell you a little bit about what they've been working on as far as helicopter noise. As you know, if you live in Puna, you know about helicopters.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, welcome. Just going to run a bathroom real quick, so I'll take it over.
Pay attention, I'm good with the mic, put up the microphone. Just pass this, take one and pass it up. Just take one and pass it back. My name is Daryl, I'm not a politician, I'm not a public speaker, but I have become an activist. And I work in an organization called Hi-Cop. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, we're trying to put an end to the tour helicopters flying over residential homes. As many of you know, some of us get over 100 flights a day, and a lot of people are beginning to leave Hawaii because of the problem. Now, in the 20th century, corporate America sprung up, the industrial revolution sprung up. And when corporate America sprung up, corporations started getting bigger and bigger, they started uniting. And they became to the point where, in the Obama era, they got too big to fail. Now, what's happened is that the air tour industry is very much like the FAA. The air tour industry lobbies with millions and millions of dollars every single year for politicians that support their cause, and they give that money to them to get them re-elected. And a lot of them don't support our ideas. They'll come to our communities, they'll say what we want to hear. If any one of you were at the town hall meetings last year, I'm not sure if anyone was there, but we had shots there, and we had gabbered there, and they were just, they said, "We're outraged what's going on here. And we're going to do something about it, you have our commitment." And that was a lot of fluff and a lot of talk, but you know, till today, a year later, we've got no action from them. And they keep saying the same thing to us, "We're working on it, we're getting the air tour company to come up with a solution." We're gonna, we're working on it, we're getting the air tour company to come up with a solution, and you know, it's, it's, it's in hand, and we're gonna get something done about it. And you know, as far as we're concerned at Hi-Cop, that's just a lot of fluff, a lot of talk, but no action. So we really need, is we really need for all of you that are affected by tour helicopters, and for those that are not, believe me, if you're not affected today, you could be affected tomorrow. We need to all advocate. You know, on that flyer, there's things that you can do. You can go to our website, you can send our delegates a message that you want something done about it. Because only with your voice will we be able to solve this problem. Each and every one of us need to get up there and speak our voice and let people hear us and say that enough is enough. You have disparaged the communities of Puna and Hilo because we don't have the wealth that places like Maui and Oahu have. You know, they would never put up with what we put up with on a daily basis. And we need to be able to let our delegates, our congresspeople and our senators, we need to let them know that enough is enough, and we want something done about this. So please go onto our website, please fill out one of these contact forms and send it in. Okay, now, we're working very hard on a phone app so that you can take a picture of what's going on with the helicopters that's flying right above your roof, and then you can send that picture in to our congressional people. So we're working on that, and hopefully in another month or so, because a lot of us don't have access to computers. A lot of us don't have Wi-Fi in our, in our homes, but we have smartphones. And we can use our smartphones to be able to get our voice out there. Now, the air tour company has created an organization. They created their own organization, their own nonprofit, for their own personal benefit, and they want us to go onto their site and file the complaints with them. That's a lot of malarkey, and this is, this is what our representatives are proposing to us. Our senators, our congresspeople, they get into these meetings with these tour companies, and the tour companies provide them with all the feedback on what needs to be done. And we think that this is wrong, and we need for all of you to be a voice, to be heard. So this coming Saturday, we have a get-together at the Wailea Park in Hilo. And we're asking all of those that want to get involved, if you want to hear what we're doing, we're filing small class action lawsuits. We're asking everybody that's affected to send in a cease and desist letter and file a small claims court filing. It was very successful in the mainland some years back, and we think that we can do the same thing. We gotta hit them where it hurts, in their pocket. Thank you. If you need any information, we have signs in the back, yard signs you can put in your yard. We have sign-up sheets so you can meet, we can stand for them. And we'll be happy to have any, all of you help us advocate for a quieter skies, get these helicopters offshore. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody need a copy?
All right, my voice isn't that loud. Testing, okay. Okay, this is a quick update to our internet and cell phone connectivity. The Federal Communications Commission created a new fund called Connect America Fund, and Hawaiian Tel has taken advantage of that, and they are now offering high-speed internet at a lot lower cost than the satellite internet. In new locations, Inaloa, Fern Forest, Fern Acres, Eden Rock, Hawaiian Acres, Orchid Land, even down in Kalapana. We have a handout on it back there if you'd like more information. We, we actually applied for it through Hawaiian Telecom because currently we use Xcede Satellite Internet, which is really expensive, and I live in Fern Acres. We also have new cell towers coming up. Verizon is putting up a cell tower in Eden Rock at Okeha Avenue and Ala Pula Street. And that was approved by the planning commission with conditions, and we are awaiting what those conditions actually are. But we have the, uh, the agenda back there if you'd like to look at it.
Jen, when they put up these towers, did they get it on private land? They like rented up some one or really like provided, you know, towers?
Uh, I'm, I'm actually, it's usually private land, and they have some sort of agreement where they, they buy it or they rent it from someone. And we also have another Verizon tower that was approved at the top of Fern Forest. And another one that is looking to be off Twenty-first and Kaloli in HBB. If you don't mind, maybe we could just call out questions, tell the end, and we can get through. We have a really long agenda.
Just relates to this, that's all.
Okay, yeah, well, you can write it down, that way you don't forget.
I won't forget.
Okay, great, thank you. Farmers markets is next. I have a, so I passed a bill that would allow farmers market in Pohoa Park. And that was a pretty big struggle. When currently, all of the details of that farmers market as far as what would be sold, how many vendors, will have to be worked out from a nonprofit and the Department of Public Parks and Recreation. And I believe Main Street Pohoa is looking to work out that memorandum of understanding with them. And Mark Hinshaw is back there. If you have questions, maybe you could talk to Main Street Pohoa of your desires or like to get involved with it. And I have a list of all the farmers markets in Pohoa back there for your convenience. I think it's really important to support local ag and support our local economy. And farmers market is the best way to do that. Commercial kitchens. I've been looking for a place for a commercial kitchen for a really long time. I've been looking at the commercial kitchens in Pohoa at the new gym. There's two concessions that are approved there. We have a septic tank for it. At first, the property appelle told me we were good to go as long as we had a nonprofit manage it and that we had a portable stove. Then, a few days ago, and I followed up, just to make sure, because I wanted to share it with you guys, he was like, well, maybe you should talk to the fire department before you bring it out to a contingent. So call the fire department, and they were like, absolutely not. You cannot have any open flame, you can't have any propane tanks or anything in that building unless it's to code and unless you have a ventilation system which costs twenty thousand dollars. So we're kind of back at square one. So I'm looking at new locations, and I'm going to need your help. At some point, I'm going to need a nonprofit to help manage it. But I am getting more comprehensive funds, and I want to prioritize making commercial kitchens more available in Puna. The next location I'm looking at is Mount View Gym. We already have a septic system that meets the requirements, and I'm awaiting a department help to call me back about this facility for a commercial kitchen. And in the meanwhile, I have a list of all the commercial kitchens on the east side for your convenience, if that interests you. Roundup. This happens. They spray Roundup directly in a lot of ways at the park. So I plan on introducing a bill, we're working on it right now, to require departments to use non-toxic heat control methods. We're looking at what has been cost-effective and successful in other states. We're working with Beyond Pesticides and Pesticide Action Network to do that, and we're crafting. We're working upon Margaret Willey's old bill and crafting it to be even better. Fire ants. I recently had a town hall meeting, and it was all about fire ants. And the theme of that meeting was "One ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." So tango on the outside of the house and bait treatments on the inside of the house appear to be the most approved method according to the experts. Tango is a hormone regulator, so it acts like birth control for the ants. And you have to apply it every month for about six months. And then you're clear free for, for about two years with maintenance treatments. And we have a bunch of handouts back there, plenty of resources, myths about fire ants, recipes for the tango, and links to videos that will show you how to do it. Building codes. I'm working on a couple different building codes. This is something that I'm considering introducing because in the past, in the past, before about five years ago, according to the local draftsman in our district, as long as you had a licensed architect sign off on your plans, they would approve it. But that changed. Now you have to have a licensed architect and a structural engineer within the county approve your plans. And since that's happened, it's caused a lot of backlog in the planning department, the building department. And it's made it a lot more expensive and arduous for people to get their building, their buildings approved. So I want to make it more accessible for people to build safely and legally because currently, people are just throwing their hands up in the air. If you want to throw, you want to build legally, it costs about four times more than if you were just build what you want. So this is one of those ways of doing it. Other building codes I'm looking at are tiny homes and allowing tiny homes. I introduced a resolution, it was my first resolutions when I got in office, and it was to support a state measure that would allow tiny homes on ag land. Because of our council, our county resolution, we, we passed it. It went to the state, the state bill passed, and then the mayor, the governor vetoed because our mayor wrote testimony opposed to it, saying that we already allow tiny homes here. And so the planning department is insisting that we already allow tiny homes. And they're putting out a brochure next week on how exactly people can do that, some pressure from us. But we're still looking at changing the building code to allow for all the different specific code changes that we need to allow tiny homes because if we were allowed tiny homes, then why do we not allow tiny homes? There are minimum space requirements within the code. And so that's gonna be a whole new battle. All right, and that is my presentation. So we're happy to take questions. Thanks for sticking through. Jean.
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. I'm Jean Tomashiro. I am a Hawaiian national, natural law. I didn't know I was gonna become one, but as some of you already know what happened to America in eighteen seventy-one when they created the District of Columbia. It became a federal corporation by its own definition. So everyone wants remedy, and everyone is trying to, you know, appease the regulations that the corporation puts down for you to scramble and argue and, and lobby for. They're not even lawful, especially in Hawaii. So that being said, I know a lot of you know, let me just go on to why I really came. And it relates to the cell towers and the electromagnetic frequencies called 5G. Fifth generation, which is coming, we have up to 4G right now. It is a very small weaponized microwave. It is the biggest news and the biggest infrastructural rollout America has ever seen, but nobody's talking about the dangers, health dangers. Okay, it's weaponized to burn your skin. So all I'm asking, Jen, you guys can remain Fourteenth Amendment U.S. corporate citizens if you want to. I'm not anymore. I'm a free man, lawful in my own country, and I can prove it in any court. That being said, this health effect of 5G affects everybody. I have, I printed up twenty sheets. This was information relating to the danger, health dangers of 5G, let alone the secure communication grid that will be created for the police state. All law enforcement will know exactly where you are, what appliances you're using, where it is. It's basically the New World Order. Okay? So that's 5G. Look it up, 5G danger, and you'll see two hundred articles and, and, and YouTube videos about it. My recommendation to Jen and anybody else who serves the public and swore an oath to serve and protect, look it up, Jen should have one of these. And then you guys should all come together and decide what you want to do because you have unadmissible rights to follow the destiny and, and self-determine what you want. You have unadmissible rights, you were born with it, but if you surrender them and you don't know the law, well, you get what you got coming. So this one is for you, Jen.
You're welcome to put them on in the journals if any of you are interested.
I only brought twenty, but you can look it up, 5G.
Thank you. I just looked at the notes. It doesn't specify whether or not these towers are 5G.
No, 5G is actually a small unit, about that big. They're gonna go on virtually every telephone pole, four feet high off the ground. Okay? Small microwaves cannot get through the walls as effectively as the big towers. So they're gonna use those big towers, and they're gonna supplement that with a mil, I don't know. There's millions of these small microwave ones. Yeah.
Thank you, Jean.
So look it up. That's what the small microwave would do for you or against you.
Are there any other questions? Any questions?
Can you tell me a little bit more about Bill twelve about the rooster?
Oh, rooster, I think that, so this is a bill that Councilmember O'Hare drafted. I actually haven't had a chance to read it yet because I was preparing for this town hall. But what I think it does is it makes it non-permittable or something to have a rooster on a tether within seventy feet of a fence line. Yeah, there's a copy, there's a bunch of copies for you.
It's very, it's very specific when it's not for agriculture, not for meat, not for egg production.
Okay, thank you, yeah. There's copies for you to look at yourself. I'm sorry I'm not educated enough on it at the moment, but we, we did bring copies, and I would love to hear your feedback. You can call me, we can talk story, you can email me, send in your testimony. I think it's getting heard. In two weeks, on the thirteenth is our next committee meeting. And so please come and testify and share your thoughts. Yeah, thank you. Great question.
I grew, I was, I was, I was working for a tour, and our, our testing people get rooster, rooster and hen to get hen, eggs. And until now, we moved to paradise, that's all agricultural land, right? They give us some land, a field, a lot, we raise chickens and roosts to get eggs. And a lot of people coming in, coming to next door, oh, your city is growing, I cannot sleep. Why is that? He should know that agricultural land is to raise animals and whatever.
Cover, move out. You guys know like that, yeah? Move out.
So for the coffee, the shoulders of the, the safe, safety with bicycles, with this, with so many, I just think that so many people don't have any children on.
We've seen that a lot.
And, and it doesn't, it doesn't look like university towns, it's a safe place. I know that's closer to you, but, but we need that. I, I would like to run my mic.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I used to run my microphone there until all of my friends are hit by cars. It was a sign. Yeah.
Hi, Jen. I just wanted to comment and then ask a question. On your tax plan, I really appreciate the comprehensive analysis that you did, all the scenarios that you ran for us to actually see the difference in what is really possible, so thank you for that. And where can we get a copy of it?
Oh, I'll be happy to send it to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question. Okay, you guys talked about the taxes and whatnot, about all these people moving out. Most of the people bought their land in ag land so they could raise animals because most of the people do eat a chicken egg, they do eat a chicken egg. You came to local families, and you came into the Puna area, and you ate chicken pafaya, most likely you ate a homegrown chicken. You ate fresh eggs. And here's another thing, how many people you guys know in the district have seventy-five feet from this side to that side, front, back, side to side, side to side? Not too much people. That's why a lot of people buy those lands in the ag land because they can afford to buy all that, that much land. So how are you gonna pass a bill like that? That's basically saying, it's like, you need to be rich to live in. That's basically saying, like, you need to be rich to live in an ag land, and isn't the right of an ag land to raise animals?
That's not what the bill says, it's, this bill gives a provision for people who have a rooster farm, and that's a different thing than people with chickens and roosters and hens and baby chickens and eggs, totally different.
Okay, how are you going to get chicks without?
You need a rooster and hen.
Okay, well, so I can also start this?
No, but what we like to know is, are you supporting the bill? Yes or no? It's a yes or no question, it's simple. You can have four roosters, 75 feet each side, which means all of us from paradise to volcano cannot get nothing. It's a yes or no question, stop beating around the bush, either you support it or you don't.
Sorry if you feel like I'm beating around the bush, but I'm sorry, I haven't read the bill, I have to be honest with you.
She has not, she doesn't know enough at this point to make a position on it.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, it's easy, you can have four chickens, 75 feet, four roosters, it, it's not, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out.
There's probably a lot more in that bill.
There is, there's also already on our, on our statutes that you cannot have most of the agricultural stuff within 1,000 feet of a roadway. So most of the egg, including pigs, including apiary, including chickens in large quantity, aren't allowed anyhow by the county already in ordinance, so this is not changing that at all.
So if that's the case, then why do you guys call it ag land if we can't have?
That's what's in the, on the record right now, you guys are arguing that's already on our books, we cannot have many of the things that we think we can already on. That's, in fact, Eileen O'Hara is looking at changing that.
Can you speak, um, may I?
I think what's important to point out, if you don't have a position now, is at least for staff to explain where this bill is going and what the flow chart is. And that was not explained, you know, by the maker of this bill, Eileen O'Hara. In other words, on March 13th, it's only going to the Planning Committee of the Council, and because it triggers Chapter 25, this land you say, it then has, they make a recommendation to both the leeward and the windward Planning Commission, and then they make a recommendation back to the Planning Council, the Planning Committee of the Council, who then makes a recommendation to the Council as a whole, who hears it two times. It's a long process, and there are many opportunities, but just to tell people what they're looking at is really key.
Yes, so I believe the 13th, if you guys wanted to sign up for specific rooster updates, please write that on the newsletter, and we'll try to keep you posted on when those hearings will be coming up. The next one is going to be, not next week, but the week after that, Tuesday in the Planning Committee, please come down and testify.
You know what, this is a poultry bill, not a rooster bill, this is basically poultry. You guys trying to, she's trying to make it a rooster bill, to get all the people behind her and stuff, this is basically a poultry bill. In order to keep a line of chickens, I show chickens, I raise bantams, Leghorns, you need roosters to keep them going. If I only need two, what, I mean four, what can I have?
And this pertaining to anybody who raises?
But this is not a rooster bill, this is a poultry bill.
If you're raising bantam roosters, Leghorn roosters, you cannot raise none of them.
Yeah, I also raise chickens.
Oh, so you understand what we're saying?
I raise chickens, yeah. So, I have more.
Yeah, I think what, as my real, it's got a lot of things in there, so I suggest snap and counsel really read this thing, because it's.
So, yeah, come down and testify, that way everyone, because I'm only one vote, there's nine other council members, we need five, five council members have to agree with Ms. O'Hara in order for this to pass.
So how come she not here?
Yeah, where's the pickup?
I don't know where she is.
She's on the way.
Oh, she's at the Puna Neighborhood Watch meeting.
Where's the meeting at?
No, no, I think it's in Pohoa, at the Pohoa Neighborhood Show.
Since you're talking about roosters, could I be allowed to ask, my neighbor wants a rooster because she said only the fertilized eggs have the good cholesterol, so if you're eating unfertilized, is it really true?
Yes, it's true.
So it's allowed from the one, from the rooster?
I have a question that Eileen is also looking into, because she is looking at broadening the amount of agriculture we can have, and to even become more in line with other counties in the state, including O'Hana, and allowing more things like chickens in residential and apiaries in residential, how do you feel about that?
I think that's a great idea. I think anyone who wants to grow food should be able to grow food.
Many people here do not realize that most of our ag land is very constrained in our current reading, and that any neighbor can close down most of the agricultural feelings we have right now in ag, and definitely there's no ag allowed in any residential.
Right, yes, too, I think any, I know there are places in America where it's illegal to grow food in your front yard, I believe that is the one.
We have that here. Every residential.
With the incumbents and things like that.
Every residential lot in Hawaii County, it is illegal. We already have that here, she is looking at changing that.
Those criminal farmers.
Are you sure?
Yes, it's, it's in, it's the same place where you're not allowed to have apiaries, piggies, roosters, chickens within 1,000 feet of a roadway. It's in our county code, it is already in our county code.
Thank you for pointing that out. We're about wrapping up, if you also have any comments and questions you would like me to answer, feel free to leave your half sheet up there. Are there any other questions? Airbnb, so this is something I've been focused on, this is part of the reason why I haven't a chance for this rooster year, because I've been trying to translate this Airbnb bill, it's, there's a few copies for it up there, and I also prepared a layman's terms version of it for everybody to read. So basically, off the top of my head, what it's doing is it's providing zoning, it specifies what zones that vacation rentals are allowed in, it only regulates, it only defines vacation rental as a property that the owner or the operator does not live on, so it only applies to people who are renting out another separate property. And then it has some basic regulations, like they need to prove their transient accommodation tax in good standing, so they're paying those taxes, they need to show a couple of other things, I have the translation there, it's all in layman's terms for you, you should take a copy of it. I think what else I'll talk to my head, it makes it really difficult for people in Puna to have a vacation rental, basically grandfathers in, existing ones in good standing, and then makes it extremely difficult, and actually places extraordinary demands on people who want to get a permit, they have to get, if you have a vacation rental that's not in good standing, then you have to, you have six months to get in good standing, and all the documents that they're requiring for that, it's very unclear. So I had just had a conversation with the planning department this morning, talked about an hour, and they're going to revise it to be clearer what they're actually asking of people in Puna for a rock and reform permit.
Is there anything that we didn't do, like ag tourism, that we follow that kind of category for term stays?
The bill doesn't specify anything for ag tourism, but it's just important to reiterate that this bill would only apply for people who do not live on the property they're renting. So people who are renting rooms out of their home, or they're renting in O'Hana to supplement their income, this bill would not affect them, which I think is a good thing, because this is a very, there's not a lot of economic opportunity in our district, and this is one of the few things that people can do to diversify their income.
So is this legal to rent out to a lot of you?
I would think that it's, yeah, I guess it depends if you're in good standing.
And you could bounce yourself back on running.
Kate, could you have a question?
I just want to know, what's good standing, what is that?
It's defined there, because good standing means that you have your general access tax license, your transient accommodations, taxes are paid up to date.
Jen, there's another important thing that could also put your property back into residential out of homeowners, there is some discussion on that. Some people have been flipped back into owning an O'Hana, especially if you've had an O'Hana, they've gotten hit with getting bumped out.
Okay, that reminds me, I'll get to you next, let me just say this, if you own a home in Puna and you're on ag land, chances are you're paying the ag rate. The ag rate is way higher than the homeowner rate. Puna is getting the short end of the stick when it comes to taxes right now, we're the poorest district in the state, and we're paying a higher rate, because a lot of people don't know to apply for the homeowner exemption. If your house isn't permitted, it's okay, you can still apply for the homeowner exemption if they won't come down on you, they don't communicate with the planning department. The tax office will not say that your house is permitted, as long as you show that you're living in your house, you get the homeowner exemption. So, let's pay lower taxes, apply for your homeowner exemption.
My name is Heidi Austin, I live on ag land, house Pohoa there, and when I applied for a building permit, I was told that I had to sign a paper that if I wanted to build a cottage 600 square feet or less on my property, I could not have electricity or water. If I built that cottage anyway and add electricity and water, I would have to pay a $5,000 fine. And if I didn't sign this paper, I couldn't get my building permit, so I signed it. And I really like you to, I'm really upset about it, because I'm an older person and I need that extra cottage, you know, I'm getting older and older and older, and I'm going to have somebody to take care of me and my land, and that's one way that I could do that.
Right, okay, would you be, Auntie, if you could call our office, we can look into that specific situation and ask the planning department why they're telling you, because that's completely unreasonable, that's another part of how Puna is being discriminated against, is because it's all zoned ag, that means that every building has to be associated with ag, so people cannot build residential properties, we can only build farm dwellings, we can't build O'Hanas legally. We have to, we have to lie and say that it's a farm dwelling.
Well, you know, much, it's up to you to choose to remain in their jurisdiction.
Yep. Only on the side.
Like, you can apply, you can get, yeah, then you can get out to the way you want to tell them where you're talking. See, this is kind of, so the town office, stay a distance, this is my car, this is what I produce, and you can change your car. Okay, thank you, everybody, please take my car, and we'll talk soon.